Good afternoon, I'd like to call this meeting in Lancaster County Council to order. I asked the clerk note for the record that a quorum of council is present. That public notice of the meeting, including the meeting agenda, has been posted, the required length of time in the lobby of the county administration building and on the county website, and the news media was notified of the meeting time and place. I welcome you to your county council meeting. I would ask that you take a moment to turn off our place on vibrate, any cell phones or pagers. Thank you for not wearing any hats or caps in the council chambers, and please be considerate of others in the room by refraining from conversations during the meeting. I ask that you please stand and join the council for the pledge of allegiance, followed by the invocation given this evening by council member Stuart Graham.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear loving Father, thank you for many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work. We pray for our county employees, our citizens, and for this council. Grant us the wisdom to governor, the confidence in what is good and fitting, personal peace in our lives. Pray for the agenda set before us today. Please grant us the wisdom to do what is right and what would benefit those who live, work, and raise families in our beloved Lancaster County. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay, we're going to move on to item four, approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes or deletions to the agenda? Not, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm moved.
Have an emotion from Ms. McGriff.
Second.
Second from Mr. Graham. All those in favor, please, roll call vote. All those answer Ms. Simpson when she calls on you.
Stuart Graham.
Approve.
Charlene McGriff.
Approve.
Billy Mosteller.
Approve.
Jose Luis.
Approve.
Steve Harper.
Approve.
Bryant Neal.
Approve.
Brian Carnes.
Approved. Okay, we don't have any citizens' comments today, so we're going to move straight to item six A, discussion of the administrator's recommended budget, Mr. Mostall and Ms. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and council members. Appreciate the opportunity to have another budget conversation today. So our goal today is to address any council issues from the last meeting. There were some additions that you wanted some more exploration on that we've included in the agenda today that will adjust some of the budget numbers. Hopefully, we can leave today with what we would call roughly a balanced budget with no millage increase, so that way we can prepare for the first reading on May 27th. What you have in your agenda packet today is some of the follow-up information that was requested from last week's budget retreat, specifically the back pages of your agenda packet. Highlight one of the requests that included some information on the rent for the different facilities that we pay. There's a page on that in your agenda packet. And then also, there's specific information requested about the contractual services line item and details for the travel and training. So all the notes, all the background information is in your packets now to address that request. And then also, there's a request at the meeting last week to hear more about stormwater as it relates to the stormwater fee, and then hear more about the hill splitter as it relates to the hill splitter process and fee. And so we're going to start out our meeting today to give you that follow-up information on the stormwater services department, get an overall department view, a little bit about their budget fee. And I'll ask first Mr. Terrence Barr to come forward as director of our stormwater building, and he'll walk through his department presentation.
All right, good afternoon, chairman, council. I'm up here, and then I brought my deputy, Ms. Angela Crockett, as well. So I think the slides are in front of you, so I'm not going to insult your intelligence. We go to the next slide, please. Okay, as we all know, stormwater regulatory framework was in 2010. At least five distinct portions of Lancaster County, which we call the Panhandle above Highway 5 that we all are familiar with, follow the stormwater fee. That area makes us a small MS4 versus a whole MS4 of the whole county, we just cover a portion of the county. Wherever permission for the small MS4, population of 10,000 or more? Again, we talked about above Highway 5. Picking any questions, I'll go to the next slide. All right, so the question is always, what is MS4? And then, MS4 is designed to manage stormwater runoff and prevent pollution in our local waterways. Why does it matter? Well, we reduce the flooding, protect the water qualities, ensure environmental compliance. Who does it benefit? It benefits the whole county by mainly those who pay towards the small MS4 fee. That's everyone in the Panhandle. Any questions? All right, next slide, please. How does it help? Well, we reduce the lower pollution, sediment runoff, flooding, and erosion. And then we all know what erosion cause. It causes land to lose stabilization. Regulatory maintenance exists to keep stormwater facilities and the MS4 maintained, updated, and approved. We expand our capability to install new facilities countywide and boost the county's ability to manage them. We meet the growth needs as the county grows, ongoing improvement, and stricter regulations. And it, just to bring everybody up to speed, prior to us being established, you had, which is non-DES, which used to be DHEC, had one inspector cover seven counties. Now we're able to do that as a county. So again, as I say, we benefit all. And then our stormwater fee that I briefed last year, and some of you are aware, our stormwater fee has $60 versus Pineville area about $78. All right, pending any questions, next slide. All right, again, I talked about how much, how that fee impacts the county. Funds collected through stormwater fees are used to cover the cost of managing stormwater, including cleanup, pollution, and maintaining drainage infrastructure. Currently, we have a total of seven employees, and we're responsible for stormwater management in Lancaster County MS4 area. Any questions? Next slide, please. All right, here's some of the key elements of the NPDS permit, and I'll let Angela cover those.
We have stormwater management program plan. That's a plan that we have to develop and update every year, saying how we would manage stormwater. Pollution control measures, those are really BMPs, what BMPs will implement to manage stormwater. And we have to put those in our stormwater management program plan. Monitoring and reporting, we must monitor and report to DES each year what we're doing. Public participation and community involvement. That's, we need to get the public involved in our stormwater management program plan, get them, let them know what we're doing, and kind of get them involved in developing the plan. And then evaluation and updates, every year, we should update our stormwater management program plan.
All right, next slide, please. All right. As you can see for FY '25, we, so far, we have reviewed 228 plans to date, and we still got the rest of this month before July comes in. And that's a significant increase from last year. Inspections, we're at 812. I will tell you, last year, we did 700 inspections. So we still have another month to go. That's just how busy we are. We streamline water quality assessment. The last two years, we spent over $7,000, I mean, over $24,000 in going to a lab to do the calculations of what we assess in the river. Now with Angela and inspectors, we can do that in-house, and we're saving the county over $14,000 alone. Again, we had a site, we had saved over $8,000 this year as far as inspection reports. We used to use a cloud-compliant system. Now we do it in-house on GIS, so we're saving the county $8,000 there. So post-construction management, we, right now, we consider 187 to 208 stormwater control measures has been inspected. You look at it percentage-wise, that's over 90%. That means we're A in high school, about to graduate. All right, next slide. Alex.
So, some of the challenges we face, the stormwater management program plan is supposed to be updated every year, and we haven't updated that plan since 2018, so we really need to update that plan. Some of these tie in together, the easements right of ways, the level of service extended service. Since I've been here, like, a year and a half, it's kind of hard for me to determine what our level of service is. So I think kind of narrowing that down would help us in our department. Phase disturbance, sometimes we, what I've seen, we have in phase disturbance, so you'll have a 30-acre site that's completely graded, and you don't phase it like in three phases, where 10 acres at a time can be graded. Staff training, we have a lot of new staff, so we need to catch up on that. That's it for this slide. Any questions?
Well, I just got the 288 plan reviews, that include residential, too?
Yes, sir.
So that means that the growth in Indian land has slowed down into...
Well, I'm not counting the individual lots that we look at.
Y'all don't, that's not counting individual?
No, sir. No, sir.
Oh, okay.
If you count individual lots, ours is about 50% of what building look at, because building covers the whole county. We look at individual lots only in the MS4, so we didn't count that in...
288 plan reviews are...
Yeah, so those typically, when we get a set of plans, a lot of times, we get the 50 or 60% solution. So once, you know, they send them to us, because they're trying to meet that deadline. I'm just trying to get my plans in front of the stormwater, meet 21 days. Then they give it to us, we look at it, we send it back, then they make small corrections. So it's basically a game. Instead of they doing quality control on their plans, they're just trying to meet the clock so that they didn't get the site approved. Say, hey, we submitted our plans to Lancaster County, we're trying to figure out what's taking them so long. But if you got a 60% solution on a set of plans, no BMP measures, no looking at water quality or anything like that, then we have to go back through it. Then we question if the slope meeting the 3:1 to 4:1 slope requirements for the state of South Carolina. Sometimes it's 1:1, and they don't even want to build a retaining wall, so we have to go back and forth between that. So that brings the number up as well. All right, next slide, please.
Some of our goals and initiatives, we have to create an enforcement response plan. We did have an audit from the state DES, and since I've been here, I have done it. An internal audit, so some of this, it wasn't surprising, some of the stuff we missed. So we need to develop an enforcement response plan, and we need an ordinance to back that plan so we can implement enforcement. And public involvement and outreach, that, we need to really address our pollutants of concern. We need to establish what they are and address them with public involvement and outreach. Let's see. And that goes along with our implementation plan. Good housekeeping, we want the county to do, we want to practice what we preach, and we want the county, public works, and our staff to also follow stormwater rules. We need to update our maps. We want to get more training for our staff. We want better tracking of our history of complaints, and we want to update our stormwater management program plan.
All right, next slide, please. So again, we talk about meet the team, and I know Mr. Carnes came out before, and sir, your father came out, Mr. Graham came out, and Mr. Luis came out and met the team. But just so you understand who's on our team, we have a stormwater director, which is myself. You have Angela here, who's our deputy, and she's been a huge impact to our team. We have environment compliance manager, that's Stephen Blackwelder. He does a lot of our plan reviews. We have outreach, Ms. Elizabeth Evans, and you know, last year, WCNC News covered our storm drain marking set as far as outreach. We have two inspectors, both Jaren Watts and Joyce Mullers, and we now have administrative assistant, Ms. Jasmine... Jasmine, thank you. So next slide, please. All right, so you've seen some of this stuff when we first came on board and we approved it. Again, when we talk about stormwater, stormwater team trying to make changes, the first slide, where you see all the houses, that's, again, that's slope failure. Again, that slope was approved prior to us taking over, so that slope is like a 1 and 1/2 to 1. So when you have slopes like that, even with the soap fence up top, water stone runs down, and with improper grading, when they're supposed to grade sideways, they go vertical this way, that would happen. Next slide, just, again, slope failure, as far as when the houses start settling, you see the cracks there. We don't have the experience from an inspector that who can match compaction to make sure that that stuff doesn't happen. When Angela's talking about open grading, those two, those two slides shows of areas that have more than 25 acres that have been graded. And then they left and say, hey, this is going to be phase two, phase three. But when they submit the plans to us, they submit it as one plan. And then later, they go, well, we're going to make that phase two, phase three. So when it's open like that, you get erosion. Then with erosion, you get houses on top. So those are some of the things we fight. And I know Mr. Carnes has talked to us several times before about people calling about compaction issues or slope failure. So those are some of the things that happen to us. Next slide, please. Again, another compaction issue, we'll start, some project will start and then they'll leave it. You can see where holes went, and one hole is like nine feet deep. Again, and some of that is also when joints slip in infrastructure, so when that happens, then the ground just falls. It's like a bunch of basketballs trying to find their way someplace, and then land gives, earth gives. Next slide, please. All right, again, and Jeff can tell you on some of this, when we allow some of the houses to be sealed, but they haven't put the final lift, then you start putting trucks again on that same road, and we got one lift, so then they start cracking. So we just got to be a little more vigilant and making sure that we get things closed out at one level. Next slide. Again, that's just another example of one lift, then you got void under that, so now you got a hole in the road. Next slide. All right. Again, we welcome you, and I will acknowledge some of you have been out to see us, but we welcome you to come see us, see what we do. And we're open book, have nothing to hide for you. So you're welcome to come join us, but pending this, this is our brief. Any questions?
Any questions?
There's a lot of mud involved.
I promise you this, we'll get you some good boots so you won't know all the mud. And we play your favorite song, Boots on the Ground.
And Ms. McGriff, our trucks are known to get stuck in the mud.
Yeah, we didn't put that slide up there this time.
I've seen pictures of trucks getting stuck in boots. That's why it's going to have to be a clear, dry day when I come.
Okay.
You better hope it's been a clear, dry month before you go.
Yeah, Mr. Carnes been out there, it's been pretty bad. We actually got stuck with him out there, and Mr. Luis, so...
I am a little concerned to hear that you're not up to date on some of your reportings and things like that, so do you have a plan developed to be able to do that?
Yes, sir. We have a plan developed. We also have a stormwater ordinance that's in review, that has to come in front of council, so when y'all approve it, then we can make tighter reins. Again, for our county, we meet the minimum standards that DES requires us, but we can improve those standards, will require others to improve their building as well.
All right, any additional questions? Thank you very much.
But thank you, y'all have a great day.
I've got a question, Mr. Mostall. Previously, I'm understanding stormwater was under public works, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Why was it moved?
When they were first created, I think for their first three years, in 2017 to roughly 2020, they were under public works prior to me, I'm not exactly sure. I think part of the work volume, with all the growth and development, I think part of the work volume, because stormwater does review development plans and other things, with all the growth going on, it made sense to have them synced up with development services because of all the development requests going on then. So certainly, I know Mr. Cato and I have talked before about, there are some pros and cons to having them connected, but they do work well together across departments, certainly. But my understanding is that it was moved from public works to development services, probably mostly because of the development activity.
It just looks like it'd make more sense to me for that to be under public works. I mean, that's what Mr. Cato and them do, is checking compaction and roads and, I mean, just stuff like that. I mean, it just goes together.
Yep, I'll explore that going forward. Thank you.
But you did say they work across the departments.
They do, yeah. I mean, they work with public works, but is there maybe some more synergy that we can get with them back in public works versus development services? So certainly, something I'll explore. The next item on the agenda is a follow-up from last meeting, was there a question about kind of the status of our hill splitter program? And so I'll ask Allison Harden, who's our development services director, to come forward and give you the overlay about the hill splitter and how we do that program with its fees.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about the Carolina Hill Splitter overlay. I've got, is the clicker not working?
No, just ask her to advance if you would.
If you wouldn't mind, please. Sherry, thank you. Today's small talk is about the hill splitter. We'll talk about the components of the hill splitter agreement, the status of projects related to the hill splitter, and then items of discussion that we've had recently. You would go, please? To give you an overview, for those that are not familiar with the Carolina Hill Splitter...
On the corner.
Oh, is it over there? The rare species of a small mussel. It's native to North and South Carolina. It's named for its sharp edges, which could quote-unquote "split heels," so since it's found in the Carolinas, and it hurts, called Carolina Hill Splitter. A successful habitat has gentle streams and less sedimentation in it. An interesting point about the hill splitter is that the way that they spawn is that they partner with fish that are flowing through the stream. They can't spawn in their own areas, they have to provide, the fish provide traffic for their eggs to go into different areas of the creek. Hill splitters are indicator species. That means that when the folks that are monitoring the hill splitter health, see hill splitter health going down, that means there's an indicator that the creek itself or the water body or water flow area is unhealthy. And it was originally federally listed as an endangered species in 1993. After it being indicated as an endangered species, there were studies done as to where their critical habitats were, and the critical habitats were outlined and designed in 2002. There are four rivers that include this in the state of South Carolina. The one that's related to us is Catawba River and tributaries, including Six Mile Creek. In 2008, the county council coordinated with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and Environmental Bank in exchange, which later became Resource Environmental Solutions, on a hill splitter overlay to help offset impacts to the hill splitter habitat. The agreement was signed by the agencies that said that the county would require environmental bank credits to be purchased on developments that were implemented within the Six Mile Creek watershed. The Six Mile Creek watershed is a federally designated watershed that was outlined by the USGS and its national outlining of water bodies. It goes from the state line up to the higher bank of the Six Mile Creek, almost 2521, or in some places, coming up two properties at a budget. The credits that the developers buy are a unit of measure corresponding to mitigation. It's kind of like, if you heard of wetlands credits or wetland banks, when road projects have to go through sensitive environmental areas, DOT will require whoever's building the road to purchase credits in a wetland area to offset the impacts to that wetland. Similar projects, but the unique thing about the Carolina Hill Splitters, we're the only one in the state of South Carolina that has this kind of credit bank requirement. We're also unique in the southeast for the way that it's been set up as a partnership with the community. When we talk about the need for credits, the need for credits are based on your proximity to the watershed. If you're in the watershed at all and you're doing a project, you need to buy credits worth 1.75% of your impervious surfaces. If you are building into the buffers that are close to the river, between 50 feet and 100 feet away from the river, or excuse me, the Six Mile Creek, then you have to buy credits at a different rate. It is prorated based on how much acreage of the area that you are building in or disturbing. And it's also different based on whether it's a perennial stream, which is one that always has water in it, or intermittent stream, which is a stream that may have dry spots during dry seasons but will flow very frequently during flooding seasons or rainy seasons. The credit calculation sheet that was set up by the folks that started the project has been used by staff since the beginning. In this example, this is example of a project that has encroachment into both the perennial buffer and the intermittent buffer at different levels or different distances away from the river. And you can see down at the bottom that they all come down to a credit calculation. The credits are based on not only the mitigation value, but the value of the project also are tied as part of capital gains to the market, so the capital, excuse me, the consumer price index, I believe, is one of the indicators. There's a lot of information in the notebook about that. I'm not quite a financial expert yet, but I'm getting closer every day I read this. The credit price in 2020, for example, was $6,900 per credit. The last one that we had in May 2023 was $8,900, and since that time period, we're holding the value on budget at $9,500 per credit. The components of the hill splitter agreement are the contract between U.S. Fish and Wildlife and the Carolina Hill Splitter Conservation LLC, which holds the credits, the credits themselves, okay? The credits themselves, which help fund projects, and then the UDO regulations, which help keep the natural riparian buffers in natural situations. So where does the money go? The credits that are purchased go toward holding mitigation credits on other property and also help fund the U.S. Fish and Wildlife programs to bring back the Carolina Hill Splitter from the endangered status. First project was issued in 2010, two years after the agreement was settled. The cost to estimate, the cost of the project was estimated to be 388.1 credits. The project was estimated for completion in 2012, but the credits weren't finished sold until 2017. You'll remember that we had some downtime in the beginning of this period as far as development goes, so it took a little longer to spread out. The new project planning for project two was completed by the end of project one, and there are three projects total in the contract. Project two was issued in 2018. The cost was estimated to 573.4 credits. They estimated those credits would last till 2025. They expired in 2020, or they sold out in 2023. So since that time, we have adjusted the way that we are implementing the program so that we would have time for Fish and Wildlife to come up with a project three, so that the credits could be determined, and we don't have an update right now on project three, whether there is one or not. So we are moving forward with some stopgap things that'll hold it. Yes, ma'am?
What's your question?
Sure.
About credits. I had to understand this. Is it a limit on credit, a time limit on credits?
No, ma'am.
And how many can you accumulate?
You can, you buy as many as you need. We don't have many people that go out and buy them for fun. They're kind of expensive, and you've got to be able to use them. They've got to be tied to a project. We do have at least one developer who has bought them ahead of other projects, and by doing so, has saved some money because the cost does go up over time. But the legislative... But the legislative section does not limit the number that you can buy. It does have, however, say that we can't sell what we don't have. And so, when we ran out of credits, we can't send people to the bank to buy the credits anymore. Any questions? Does that help?
I've... So, there's an agreement with Fish and Wildlife that says there's got to be three projects? Because I called the congressman's office and asked if this is still required. They put me up with, some lady was going to find out, but I never get a response from them, but...
We've been working on this update since 2023, off and on.
It's Fish and Wildlife. You've been working with them?
Mm-hmm, yes. My staff, Fish and Wildlife, we actually had phone calls with the regional coordinators as well as the local coordinator for the heel splitter. We had meetings with the banks, the RES bank representatives. We've reached out to other people who have done similar things in other states to look for alternatives. This is a very, very complex process with legal binding, contracts, and things that we're still searching out for help for. One of the biggest benefits of our current situation with the UDO is that our consultants also happen to be impact credit experts on one side of the business. So, we're recently tapped into that as well.
Would, could, y'all furnish counsel with that original contract and send it to everybody? Because it's...
Sure thing. Ms. Simpson, if it would help, I have everything here in this notebook. I can hand you the notebook, and you can make note, you can make copies for everyone. Or maybe I've got it scanned in. Let me check and see if I've already got it scanned in.
Because, I mean, it's...
Yeah, you can have everything I've got.
All the, the mitigation was down in another section of the county, right down toward Flat Creek?
Yes, because this was an impacted watershed, and it wasn't hospitable to the heel splitter.
And all that property or whatever's gone, then? Well, I don't know, I don't understand exactly how the bank works, but it's all sold out, all those credits.
All the credits are sold out, yes, sir. So, in the meantime, we still have development going forward. What we've done is that, in practice, what we have done before the credit sold out is that we require developers to have the credits purchased before the permit was issued. In practice, what we've done now is we require it before the certificate of occupancy. One of the things that has been in our behalf, has worked in our behalf as just a kismet, is that the delay of development for the last couple of years due to stormwater work and, not storm, excuse me, water and sewer expansion being in that area and development having to wait for that to come into play. But we do have a couple of projects that have since reached the CO purpose. What we, we visioned this last year, and at the budget retreat and the budget that you adopted last year, we included a line item for the Carolina heel splitter credit funds. And we are holding the money at an estimate of the credit, what we would do at that time. And if and when a project comes forward, then we'll be able to turn that money over to the credit purchasers on behalf of those properties that got the CO. But one of the things that we have talked about is because of this challenge that we've had and because of the complexity and the long-term work that is taken to understand and manage this, is could we do something different with it? So, staff has brainstormed some ideas, and that's also part of what we're looking into. Could this be converted to an internal project whereby we collect money for the credits and we send money to the Fish and Wildlife? And we use the rest of the money to clean up the watershed that is targeted. Our stormwater staff has been extremely helpful in coming up with ideas that could help stabilize the banks of the Six Mile Creek, help clean the water up, reduce the turbidity, help keep the water quality and raise the water quality. Because there's a lot of houses and a lot of businesses in that area that the area flows through. It's important for flooding, it's important for water quality down the road to the river. And it's something where we think we could do something really positive on our own with this. That's one of the discussion points that's on the screen here. The end of the program comes at the end of Project 3 or at the end of the status of endangerment, which has not happened yet. The reports from 2012 and 2019 show that they've been able to increase the population through growing the heel splitter in nurseries, but it has not reached out of the endangered species list yet. And then we've also identified areas in the UDO that need to be corrected.
And then Fish and Wildlife has to approve Project 3?
Yes, it's their projects.
I started studying that stuff a little bit, but it got over my head in a hurry, so I quit.
And another challenge for some of this is that when you ask Fish and Wildlife for the records like we did back in 2023, some of them are considered proprietary and are redacted or not available. So, it's been a dig through all of our records and all of our papers and the like to make sure that we've got a full and complete copy of every, every part of it. But I've been working on it for a couple of years off and on. I'll be happy to give you everything I have. And if y'all find something better, hallelujah, praise the Lord, please do. I'll be more than happy to give y'all credit and stand here and say, we done. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I'm going to ask you.
Yes, sir.
Go back on what Terrence was talking about with the stormwater. You know, I'd said one time before that we need to hold these developers responsible for so many years, 10 years or whatever. Make them put up a bond or something that, if they have washouts, compaction problems, whatever, that we can go back on this and use that money to make repairs with or whatever. I think, you know, that was done with Sun City. And it was had, we had to go use it because they've washed out some of their sidewalks and different things, I think, over the years. But I think we need to hold these, if we do this, it'll make these developers do a better job because they don't want to have to spend that extra money five, 10 years down the road. They'll do a better job upfront for us on this compactions and...
Yes, sir.
Washouts and stuff.
A lot of communities do it as a warranty, that you have to warranty what you've implanted and or put down on the ground for a certain amount of time after that. We already do bonds for infrastructure upfront in case they go under before they're finished with building the neighborhoods. But we could absolutely look into requiring a warranty or a guarantee for a period of X amount of years after the development whereby we could go by and have them either come back and fix it themselves, or we would contract with someone to repair it.
That'd be great.
Be happy. We are talking about infrastructure very soon in the UDO rewrite. So, I'm going to add that to the notes for UDO update, if that's okay with you.
Yes.
I appreciate that very much.
Can I go back to stormwater? I just had a question, kind of like Billy. My question is, how is that $62 set? How is the fee set for that stormwater?
It's set in the budget.
It was initially set in the budget by the size of the property for individual homes. So, if it's anything larger than that, then we charge you based upon that. The ratio for the ERU for impervious surfaces in the ERU for the stormwater fee.
Okay. But is it just based off what the budget for stormwater is? Or like, where did that...
$60 is the base price for single-family houses. For commercial stormwater fees, it's $60 maximum, or 35% of real property tax or incentive fees.
And I bring that up too, is I'm involved in our local church. And I think their stormwater is like $840. So, it's hard, it's hard for the people in the congregation to understand what that stormwater fee is going to for $840 for their impact on what they, what they bring, which...
I can help with that.
Sure.
The area of impervious surface is based, is what a lot of it's based on. The whole reason for a stormwater fee is to help keep the storm drains and the creeks and tributaries and the like...